All the order of the meeting of the May 2, 2018 Frederick County Planning Commission. You would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have an agenda before us tonight. There's no change to the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
For adoption.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. We have our committee reports tonight. I'll start with Mr. Moon, who's the CPPC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Complant Committee met in April. We had one item on our agenda, and that was the St. Paul's on the Hill Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application, which is on this evening's agenda for discussion. The proposal is to amend the Cincinnati Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and more specifically, it's to change the land use designation from the current institutional to urban center. After discussion and some interaction with the applicant, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the application.
Thank you, sir. Our next committee report be on Transportation Committee, Mr. Roats.
Yes, sir. We met on April 23rd and had four items for discussion. First was a request for truck restrictions on Jones Road. Due to the limited number of trucks that were involved and how far the detours around Jones would be, the committee recommended that the truck restriction not be considered at this time. There is a request for Grace Church Road Route 668. That's unpaved to be reviewed and added to our paved roads list. The committee voted to include that and for it to be ranked the same way all the other roads are, so it'll be fair when it goes into the system. There's also requests for Woodside Road between Route 11 and Titan Concrete. Again, the committee, there are some properties that were put forth of Titan Concrete's rezoning, so the staff is going to look into that. There was a request for truck restriction down at Star Tannery on a road there. Again, the committee felt that the benefit of doing that was not that great and would have a lot of unintended consequences on the surrounding roads. And then finally, we just had an update on a couple of county projects.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Our last committee report is Frederick Water, Mr. Unger.
Yes, sir. We met on April 17th. Frederick Water Board adopted 2019 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan, and it's a 10-year CIP plan. They've got 87 projects allocated for that, which run them a little over $80 million for a 10-year plan. The Pekin Water Treatment Plant is a big part of that. It's about 85% of it. And for the other thing they talked about, they adopted, let me wait a minute, let me get ahead of myself. Director of State of Schedule, a public hearing from May 15th to accept public comments for the proposed base rate increase for the water and sewer. Basically, what's going to happen, they're proposing a 4% increase for mostly residents, which is going to be about $5 increase bi-monthly every two months. So that shouldn't be hard to handle, hopefully. And the increase is going to be for generating wastewater treatment calls associated with Frederick County Winchester Service Authorities down to Route 7 Plant. And also, as the increase fees will also fund the ongoing lawsuit with the town of Stevens City and cover the town's unpaid monthly water and sewer bills. We have about 15,600 connections now with water. Monthly water usage is still around about 5-point million gallon of water per day. Stevens City Quarry is still holding its own. It's running 651 feet. It actually did raise about a foot and a half in April with the rain we got. Clearbrook is running about 586 feet at elevation, and it's staying very stable. Rainfall for the month was 1.57 inches, a little below normal. Quarries are holding their own and they're hoping this coming May that it's going to generate a lot more water into the quarries to stabilize everything.
Thank you, sir. Next, reports from Winchester Planning Commission, our liaison, Ms. Eaton.
Yes, thank you. So since the Frederick County Planning Commission last met, we had two meetings, a public session on April 17th and a work session just yesterday. In the new business for April 17th, the single item on our agenda was a request to, for offense, that was deviating in opacity and height requirements. That was forwarded on with a recommendation for approval to the city council. Yesterday's session, we had a request to amend the zoning ordinance in Limited Industrial District M1 to create a conditional use allowance for private community centers. And those uses range from a facility for non-commercial, non-residential use by organizations, institutions, and individuals providing social, cultural, recreational, and human resource programs and activities. We'll have a public session on that in the next two weeks. And then, April 17th, we had a few site plans that we reviewed. One, as most of you have heard, was for the Museum of Shenandoah Valley for their new entrance parking lot, event lawn, and their fitness trail systems. The other was Valley Health Center, the cancer center, for an expansion of their parking lot to include approximately 55 additional parking spaces for their cancer center area. And the Shenandoah University Building, that's just adjacent to the Valley Health Cancer Center, looking to add an additional building on their footprint. Lastly, as many of you probably also read in the paper this morning, yesterday we looked at a site plan. Just to kind of give it a quick review, there were some changes for the Brooks Manor, small revisions. That's over on Southwork and Kent. What the developer did was they removed one of the proposed 27 units so that the subdivision's access road along the Southwork section will accommodate a two-way traffic flow instead of just exiting out, which also slightly increases the green space within the subdivision's footprint. And that's all I have.
You've been busy. Thank you.
That's a lot.
Our last report of the evening is our Board of Supervisor Liaison Supervisor Trout.
Good evening. So the Board Supervisors met on April 25th, Wednesday. We approved conditional use permit for Alicia Feltoner, which was a 02-18. We also approved an outdoor festival permit for Miso Creso Nomadico. I guess that's how you say it. We postponed the public hearing for Carmuse, which is 05-17, for an additional month, and so four weeks from that meeting. And then, coming before you all, will be a petition for Mountain Falls Park to become a sanitary district. So I'm told that it will come to you all and then it'll come back to us. But we approved for it to go forward to public hearing. And I believe that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We're at the portion of our meeting that this is open for citizen comments, for any items that's not on our agenda, that anyone would like to come forward to speak to us of any matter they would choose. Seeing none, I'll close the citizen comment portion of it. Then next is our public hearing portion. Our first public hearing item we have tonight is a conditional use permit number 04-18 for West Oak Farm Market LLC, submitted for establishment of a special event facility and restaurant in the RA Rural Areas Zoning District. The property is located on Middle Road, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 74-A-3 in the Back Creek Magistale District. Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is a application for conditional use permit for a special event facility and restaurant. The property is located on Middle Road in the Back Creek District. It's presently zoned RA Rural Areas, and the current land use is agricultural. It's a working orchard and farm. The proposed use is a special event facility for weddings and other similar type events that may be private or associated with the farmer's market and a restaurant use. For your reference, here is a vicinity map. Again, for orientation, Middle Road works the property's frontage. The property, subject to this application, is highlighted and outlined in black and highlighted in yellow. And it's adjacent to Orchard View Elementary School. It's surrounded by other, like, RA uses, primarily agricultural, and across Middle Road are single-family residences. Again, West Oaks Farm is a working farm with orchards, and presently under construction is a 10,500-square-foot farmer's market building. This conditional use permit application proposes approximately 3,400 square feet dedicated to a special event center in the form of a banquet room, an outdoor picnic shelter for special events that can be used by the guests, a restaurant, which will include a deli-style counter service type use with a commercial kitchen, permanent restroom facilities, a designated parking area for the special events, and that the special events may accommodate up to 275 people. And again, they may be affiliated with an event at the farmer's market, or they may be a private, separate event. Here's an overview of the property. In the bottom right-hand corner is a view from above Middle Road and the orchards, looking towards the front facade of the property. In the top-left corner is the side in rear view of the property, which includes the special event and banquet room. Here is the illustrative sketch plan that's provided by the applicant. Again, for orientation, you have Middle Road here and Orchard View Elementary School. Presently, there is an entrance. The applicant intends to continue to use special events that is between their property line and Orchard View Elementary School. The applicant is also exploring the opportunity for a second commercial entrance. And the farm market is set kind of in the middle of the property, behind the existing orchards. Outside, you have, again, the picnic shelter and the designated gravel parking area. This proposed conditional use is consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which supports opportunities for agritourism and agribusiness in the county's rural areas. The applicant, Mr. Joe Snap, has addressed all review agency comments, including site access, compliance with building and fire safety code, and the proposed use is generally consistent with the county's policies and regulations. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions: that all review agency comments be complied with at all times; that an illustrative sketch plan be submitted to and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use; that building permits shall be acquired prior to the establishment of the deli-style counter service restaurant use; that all events shall start no earlier than 8:00 a.m., and all events and related activities shall conclude by midnight; that events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 275 persons; that one monument-style sign with a maximum sign area of 50 square feet not to exceed 10 feet in height is permitted; and that any expansion or modification of these uses will require the approval of a new conditional use permit. This evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors on this conditional use permit regarding the proposed special event facility and restaurant located on the property identified with property identification number 74-A-3. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant, Mr. Joe Snap, is here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Unger.
Just one, Tyler. I didn't realize. Are we putting two entrances in, or maybe we are?
As I understand it, they presently have one existing entrance, and they're exploring the possibility of a second entrance. The applicant has submitted his site plan for a commercial entrance to VDOT, and I'll let Mr. Snap touch on his plans for the entrances.
Anyone else? I have just one question. When we're talking about the special events may accommodate to 275 persons, but the farm market will be open at the same time. That's concurrent. So is there any restrictions on that? Is there, we're combining those two?
There is not.
Could be going on?
The farm market is a buyright use, so there are no restrictions, and it's also an agriculturally, that part of the building is agriculturally exempt.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? You could, sir. Just come, state your name and your address, please, or Magistale District.
Name is Joe Snap, Back Creek District. Say to address the entrance, the second entrance, actually, it's only basically primary use is just for the farm. Maybe service entrance occasionally, but mostly for our farm, you know, for the agricultural use. Just to comment about your building, you do have a beautiful place there. The only thing that I can think of, and it's nothing that can be controlled, is, I don't think, I know how well Johnny Marker does with his, and it's a very nice facility, too, and sometimes they actually have to direct traffic in and out there. Middle Road's, you know, 55 miles, mile an hour through there. I just wonder, hopefully it's not a problem, but you've got great sight distance. I can see that, so it shouldn't be. If he's generating what he does, I can't imagine what you're going to be generating there. And it should be great.
Well, thank you. Anyone else have a question from the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you, and just like to ask for your all's approval.
Thanks, sir. This time, I'll open the public hearing. To anyone who would like to speak to this matter, this is the time to come forward. Come to the microphone. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say that I had the pleasure of touring Joe's facility yesterday, and you can call it state-of-the-art. You can also call it, it's going to be a big, big plus for agritourism and business, for sure. And he has a great facility there.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No other questions for applicant or staff?
There is nothing else, Kevin. I would like to recommend approval of conditional use permit number 0818 for West Oaks Farm Market LLC.
Second. Have a second? Time to vote. Mr. Unger.
Unger, yes. Marshton, yes.
Ambrogie, yes.
Klein, yes.
Yes.
Thomas, yes.
Holden, yes.
Belmont, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This motion is passed. It'll go to the Board of Supervisors for their May 9, 2018 meeting. Good luck, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have to excuse myself for the next item.
Thanks, sir. The next public hearing item is also a conditional use permit for number 05-18 for Waveland Farms LLC, submitted for establishment of a special event facility in the RA Zoning District. This property is located at 1211 Marlboro Road, Stevens City, Virginia, and are identified with property identification numbers 73-1-14-1-6, 73-A-103, and 73-A-103A in the Back Creek Magistale District. Again, Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening again. This is, again, another conditional use application for a special event facility at 1211 Marlboro Road. The property, again, is zoned RA Rural Areas. Its current land use is agricultural and residential, and the proposed use is a special event facility for weddings and other similar type events. If I can direct your attention to the screen. For orientation, you have Marlboro Road here. You have an existing private subdivision street in the form of Nittany Southway and Abigail Way, and the subject properties are outlined in black, highlighted in yellow. Property is surrounded by other agricultural uses and single-family residences. This is a 24-acre working farm. They raise livestock. And there's also a single-family detached residence on the property that consists of the special event center. This conditional use permit application proposes use of an existing historic barn for host special events for up to 100 people and a designated outdoor area for temporary tents that can accommodate larger gatherings up to 180 persons. The applicant proposes to use portable restroom facilities, which will be screened from view by the topography of the site and existing farmhouse buildings. They're providing a designated gravel parking area for guests, and they'll provide valet service to and from the parking area for guests that need special accommodations. And they're proposing to include a new commercial entrance from Abigail Way and Nittany Southway. Their special event requests may accommodate up to 180 persons. Here's an illustrative sketch plan provided by the applicant. Again, for your orientation, Marlboro Road is along the property's frontage. Their existing private driveway is here. The applicant proposes that they will gate off their existing private driveway to special events to make sure that special event traffic accesses the site along Nittany Southway to Abigail Way and the new commercial entrance that they've constructed, which includes a 50-foot private ingress egress easement with the adjacent property owner. Again, on the property, you have the existing single-family residence, the event center, and the historic barn with outdoor space, and the designated gravel parking area. This proposed conditional use is consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which supports opportunities for agritourism and agribusiness in the county's rural areas. The applicant has addressed all review agency comments, including site access, compliance with building and fire safety code, and the proposed use is generally consistent with the county's policies and regulations. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions: all review agency comments shall be complied with at all times; an illustrative sketch plan shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use; that the existing private driveway shall be gated off, not open, to special event traffic, and may not be used for temporary or overfull parking; all special event-related traffic shall access the site via the private ingress egress easement from Nittany Southway and Abigail Way. That events shall start no earlier than 10:00 a.m., and all events shall conclude by midnight. Events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 180 persons. They would be allowed one monument-style sign with a sign area of 50 square feet not to exceed 10 feet in height, and that any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this conditional use regarding a proposed special event center at a property identified with parcel identification numbers 73-A-103, 103A, and 73-14-1-6. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and Tim Stowe, who is representing the applicant, is here this evening as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Thomas.
I don't see anything where they're planning to serve anything, food or water or drinks at a special event.
This application does not include a commercial kitchen or catering kitchen. All food and drinks will be brought from off-site by a catering company.
That doesn't have to be included in this at all?
It's not. You're not approving like a restaurant or anything like you did with the previous application. All their food and drink will be brought from off-site.
Disposed of off-site.
I believe so, yes.
Remnants, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Klein. The applicant would like to come forward? Mr. Stowe.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, but I don't want to.
We don't. If you could, just state your name. We know you.
Tim Stowe, Stowe Engineering. I'm sorry.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, Mr. Stowe, Mr. Unger.
Tim, where are they planning on putting the sign at? They have a, they own Fee Simple, right-of-way out to Marlboro Road along their existing entrance. We looked at that area, but we've got to make sure we place it sort of the dozen-block sight distance when you're using their entrance. So that's the area we've been looking at, out that way. Where the old right-of-way went? That's correct, yes. Old drive. I just wondered, that would be kind of deceiving if we're going to use the other road down there. And that's one of the things we're wrestling with. That's why we haven't come up with a sign yet or pulled a sign permit to do that.
Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, Nittany Southway is a private road, right?
It's a subdivision road that has been dedicated to the county for ultimate dedication to VDOT, is my understanding of where that is. So once three homes are connected to it, and my understanding is VDOT will take that road over.
Any other questions? Other questions?
There are no other houses on that Natty Southway right now. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
No houses constructed now. So when those three houses are constructed, it will become a VDOT roadway at that point.
Yes, sir. That is my understanding. I would add, we have gone to VDOT because this private easement actually connects three houses to that system, and we've asked them to consider going ahead and bringing that into the system so that the county doesn't have to continue being the owner of that. We have not gotten a response back from VDOT yet.
Is there a reason they're not using their private entrance way for this event center?
There is, Mr. Holden. It's a sight distance problem. There's a real safety problem there, so they're on the backside of a hill. If you're heading west, they're on the backside of a hill, so there's a real sight distance problem there if you're westbound going in or if you're trying to get out and proceed west.
I didn't actually ride out and see the site. I'm concerned that the lots that will be built on are subject to some traffic, and I think that really hurts the value of those properties when you think about that event center coming in on that roadway past those lots. That's my concern.
Thank you. Let me go to Mr. Unger down here. I believe he was next.
Clarify. Tell me if you will. Who is the owner of the road that we're going back to the event center? Is it the county, or is it the land? Who is it?
County doesn't own any road.
The private entrance is owned by the property owner, by the landowner? No, I don't mean that one. I'm not going to use that one. I'm talking about the one that we're going to use. To get back there, we're going through a subdivision. Who owns that road? The county is the current owner of that.
Mr. Rutter, if I could get some clarification. I didn't think we owned roads, but the county owned roads, but part of the subdivision process, when the lots are created, the right-of-way for the road is also created. That is dedicated to Frederick County for ultimate acceptance into the state's system of highways. Until it has been accepted by the state, then we carry a significant bond to guarantee that the improvements will be made pursuant to the subdivision of the lots. So while it has been dedicated to the county, at such time, the state deems it's acceptable to them to be turned into the system. The county is indeed ultimately responsible for that road.
So the county's paying the bond and not the guy that owns the land?
The subdivider of that high bank subdivision has provided a bond to the county, which guarantees the completion of that road.
Well, in my eyes, then he still owns it.
That is a legal distinction as part of the subdivision and planning process that I'm sure Rod will be able to help me with if needed. But the applicant is still responsible for the improvements within the right-of-way that's been dedicated to the county until such time the state has accepted it. And they accept it, again, after there are at least three users on there, and by resolution of the Board of Supervisors, who then send that down to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, who then take it in the system. So there's a process to go through. Obviously, as the lots have not been developed residentially at this time, they're right at the infancy of the development of that project.
Well, if there's damage done to this road, if this event center's back there, then who's responsible to take care of the damage?
The developer will be.
Pardon?
The developer of the subdivision will be.
Okay.
Well, in my eyes, he's still the owner.
Yeah. Let me come back to Mr. Thomas.
Just to make sure we're on the same spot with this. Mr. Rinker's 100% responsible for all maintenance on that road until it's dedicated to the state, and he's responsible for controlling that road. There are, county police don't go out there and control the road because it's a private road, essentially, even though it's been dedicated as a right-of-way to the county. And the county has zero responsibility, both for maintenance and financially for any maintenance on that road.
That's correct. The developer is still responsible for those items. That's correct, the developer is still responsible for those items.
So when it is to be dedicated to the state, if the state turns around and says. Uh, that's nice, but gee, we've changed the criteria between when you started this and where we are now. It's the developer is a hundred percent financially responsible to bring it up to state standards to dedicate it to the state.
Yeah, there are complications to that, but um, the, the developer, developer is the responsible person.
Okay.
And that complication, if you will, is always, uh, how much damage may have been done to the road? Uh, how much of the standards changed, is there sufficient funding in the guarantee today? Um, compared to what it was in two thousand and seven to enable that to come into the system. So there's a lot of negotiations and work that has to be done to get it turned on over. Uh, there's a risk there for, for certain, but it's the developer's responsibility.
Well, I, you know, I think this is a, a good thing, the event center, but I don't want the county on the hook for any. Cost because of the event center. Now, usually when we accept these roads into the system and say after three uh houses are built. They'll, the state, the state will accept them into the state system. We don't anticipate having an event center that could have a hundred and eighty people driving back and forth to events. Plus commercial trucks driving back and forth, so this is a little bit different than what we normally run into with a subdivision road. Do we need to put a criteria or just put a statement in here to clarify? That the conditional use permit holder is a hundred percent responsible for any damage to this road. When it has to be brought up to state standards due to the special event center being placed back here. So that there's no confusion. Uh, you say there might be confusion in here, I, I don't think we should have any confusion. So if we added a statement, maybe that would clarify it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Roddy?
Say the planning commission has the ability to put any conditions they see fit onto the conditional use permit. As long as it's related to the proposed use, as you've just described, that would be. Uh, a relevant consideration in this case.
I think the only way to do that there, that person would have to carry the bond instead of the guy that's actually got it.
Well, that person has the bond.
The guy that owns a lot has the bonds.
I, I think, I think Mister Rinker is the person that owns the lots and the special event center.
Could I, could I go back over to Mister Roddy and Mister Williams to clarify who's carrying the bonds?
The way the prop, the way the process works is that when a subdivision is filed. In order for the county to approve, for the subdivision administrator to approve it. The county requires that the, the subdivider, the owner of that land, post a bond with the county. For the cost, the estimated cost of getting the road into the system. Once the deed is recorded, the plat is recorded, the road becomes county property. Many times, or I should say the right of way becomes county property. Many times, of course, it's a subdivision in paper form only, nothing, none, the improvement hasn't been put in. In this particular instance, the improvement has been installed, but there, the bond is still required to be posted. What happens is if there is some default by the developer in not getting that road into the system. And if the developer isn't there to pay to get the road into the system, then the county can call the bond to get the road in the system. The risk for the county is, is that in that situation of a default. Where the developer doesn't put up to get the road into the system. Is that potentially the money that's posted as the bond isn't enough. And we've had that happen a couple of times. The county could, the planning commission could recommend, in this instance. We haven't typically had it happen in the past. Um, an additional bond be posted in conjunction, in conjunction with the CUP. Because of the additional risk that the additional traffic poses as far as damage to the road. Um, that could potentially go, is, is, is an obligation to be unsecured um. Beyond the current bond. That's going to be a judgment call for the commission to make.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
I've still got a question, are, are, are the lots owned by the same people that, that are applying for the uh, for the conditional use permit?
They have purchased one of the lots uh from the developer. Uh, as I understand it, perhaps one additional lot is owned by a private person and the balance remained with the original developer.
With that being said, I, I think that that event center and the traffic coming by those individual lots where that person that owns that lot. You're affecting the value of that lot by, by putting that traffic by there. That's why I asked about the um, the private driveway. Um, why wasn't that being used, but if there's a site distance, I understand that. But when you're, when you're bringing a hundred and eighty cars by um my undeveloped lot, you have, you have definitely affected the value of it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, any other questions?
Chair, I got one question to Mister Williams, how would we establish, or who would establish the value of a bond? That would go on there as a backup bond, how would that happen?
Ordinarily, when we have a subdivision, the subdivision administrator, in, in conjunction, the public works department does an estimate. Uh, I suppose what uh could happen here is certainly if the commission was so disposed to go in that direction. The commission could refer the matter to staff for a determination like that. Uh, because presumably sitting here tonight, no one knows what that number would be.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, there's no other questions of the applicant. Thank you, sir. Um, I'll open the public hearing at this time, if there is anyone that wants to come forward to speak on this matter, uh, now's your chance. Come forward to the microphone, state your name and your majesty or district.
Okay, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the planning commission. Uh, I'm Dudley Rinker, manager of Rinker Properties uh at eleven fifty-six Marlboro Road, Stevens City, Virginia. In the Back Creek District. Rinker Properties still owns nine of the eleven lots in Apple Bank South. And three of them connect to Waverly or Waveland Farm. We are opposed to this CUP for an event center. Last October, I granted access to the, the residents living on Waveland Farm driveway. Uh, on the Abigail Way for the family's safety. Mister Huey, uh, the father, passed away shortly before and they related stories to me. About how dangerous uh the entrance was. Uh, how dangerous it was for the hospice people, nurses, caregivers, family. Coming in and out of the driveway off Marlboro Road. Trying to be a good neighbor, we granted the easement for the safety of their families. There were two conditions. First, the entrance on the Abigail Way had to be built to VDOT specifications. It's hard uh to believe the entrance that they put in will meet VDOT specs. Uh, for, as a residential driveway, uh, much less as a commercial entrance. Yes, VDOT has signed off on the CUP. But they don't own Nittany Way or Abigail Way. We do, or at least in this discussion, I assume we still do, uh, but we're responsible for it. Uh, their interest would have only been the entrance on the Nittany Way up on Marlboro Road. The second requirement was that, uh, was to physically remove the Waveland Farm entrance on the Marlboro Road. Not, uh, not to block it off with hay rolls on a Saturday night. But to take it out so it cannot be used. Uh, that has not been done. I have a, I have a letter from the designer of Nittany Way and Abigail Way. He knows more about the road than anyone else and uh, I think that letter was passed out to the members before the meeting. The first three paragraphs are basically the background, but I call your attention to the last paragraph. After review, reviewing the proposed event center application. I cannot endorse adding the commercial property generated by events that in, include. Up to a hundred and sixty cars, catering trucks and other associated traffic. I have safety concerns for fire and rescue with that much traffic. I also have concerns the road will become heavily damaged. You are, you, meaning me, are still carrying the road bond until three houses are constructed. On, in your subdivision. The potential damage to the road can result in tens of thousands of dollars, perhaps more. Uh, cost to me. Uh, the road was not designed or intended, intended for this quantity in type of traffic. And that was done by Gary, it's the designer of the, of the subdivision in a road. Please note the last two sentences. The road was not designed for that much, that much or type of traffic. And the cost of the potential repairs to fix those damages. I am responsible for that road and the road bond. Not a Waveland Farm, not the county, not VDOT and not a bride who's getting married at a barn. In the end, responsibility of the road and the road bond rests solely on me and nobody else. I have many other concerns, but too many to address tonight. Again, I ask you to turn the CUP down and we thank you for your consideration and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mister Rinker? Okay, thank you, thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak to this public hearing tonight?
Good evening.
Could you state your name and?
My name's Cindy Lehman. I'm in the Back Creek District and I'm the owner, one of the owners of Waveland Farm. I grew up on that farm. Uh, we moved there when I was four years old. Dudley's been a great neighbor and family friend and a, a close friend to my father who did pass away in August. Um, we had a celebration of life for my dad because we knew he was terminal. We invited all of our neighbors there and we had a great gathering in our barn. Um, I shared with many folks there, including Mister Rinker, that our goal would be to, one day, we didn't have a set agenda. To hopefully be able to have a few events there to help us keep the farm, preserve the home and the barn. And just keep what we have a, as a legacy for our, our children and also maintain the property. Um, Mister Rinker is correct that I did approach him about being able to have an access onto his cul-de-sac. Because our driveway entrance currently is very dangerous. When we moved there fifty years ago, Marlboro Road was not traveled as it is now. Um, and it just, you know, we needed to make a change. In that thought process, we actually had asked VDOT and a board of supervisor to come out and, and address. What we should and shouldn't do. And in the event that we did want to pursue having some events at the barn, what was their recommendation? Everyone came back saying, connect here, this is the perfect way to resolve this issue, it gives you a safer entrance. And it just makes it a more um manageable process. So in our contract, uh, I did approach Mister Rinker, I felt that it was only the right thing to do. Was to buy a lot after over ten years of no one buying lots there. Um, in consideration to get the easement. Um, I feel he probably would have given it to me anyway, but I wanted to go ahead and, and buy a lot. We established a, a purchase price for the, the lots. Um, and it does buffer in front of our barn, so there's a, a four and a half acre buffer. In front of the barn that we will ensure no one builds there. So it does give a, a nice privacy from the house all the way to the barn. The adjoining lots that he's referencing actually connect to our farm. Um, it has a um pine road barrier buffer. So there is no visibility, I can't say they wouldn't see perhaps some lights, but um, it's not. Right budding up against a proposed uh construction. Um, there is a two hundred foot setback for those lots anyway by uh, a resident of rural track. So we're not gonna be up above or budding up to anyone's home. Um, as far as the permanent removal of the entrance as part of our contract. It was stipulated in the purchase contract and the easement that we would. Adhere to VDOT requirements for the closure of our existing driveway. VDOT's written requirement backed us indicated that a locked gate or a secured gate to block. Anyone from being able to come in or out of that entrance was acceptable. We did a drawing, we sent it to them. Um, we've put, we will have a gate there that is locked and, and permanently established. In the event that we're successful in this permit. So I just wanted to give you our position. Um, you know, we're not, we both have full-time jobs, we're not looking to have mega events. We're looking to have a few weddings on the weekends, one wedding per weekend, it's not multiple events. Um, and just try to preserve and support agro business and tourism. So that's why we're requesting this, so thank you for consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussion, thoughts?
Just go ahead, Roger. I mean, I don't have any problem with the conditional use permit. My problem is who is responsible to maintain Nittany Southway, the road? If the applicant owned the road, I'd have absolutely, or was, was responsible for the maintenance of the road. I'd have absolutely no qualms about approving this. But with the applicant not being responsible for the maintenance of the road. And just someone else being responsible for the maintenance of the road. That bothers me because until it becomes a state road, I mean, if it was a state road, it would be fine. But since it is essentially a private road with a private individual responsible for the maintenance. That individual has no ability to control the traffic now that's gonna be on that road. Because it's gonna be going back to the special event center, whether it's commercial vehicles going back. Or private vehicles going back. Uh, he has, he has no uh game in that, that whole plan. So ag- again, my concern is if the applicant of the conditional use permits stepped up and said. Hey, uh, I will uh put in a, an additional bond over and above what. The applicant or the previous applicant for the uh road has put in to guarantee. Any damage to the road was repaired before it goes into the state system, I wouldn't have a problem. Uh, but tha- that's my concern right now.
Well, let's look down the road a little bit here too. Uh, my, my concern is uh kinda agreeing with Mister Moulton. First of all, you're gonna hurt the value of those lots. If somebody looks at those lots in there tomorrow and they say, well, we're gonna have an event center in the back and it's gonna be. A hundred and sixty cars going in here every, two weekends a month, nah. The other thing is, is five, six, eight, ten years down the road, we get five or six houses in there. Now, what's gonna happen with people wanting a hundred and sixty? I mean, would I buy a lot in there and build a house and want a hundred and sixty cars going in on the weekends and in and out of my subdivision? Not. That concerns me, along with what you're saying, Roger.
Yeah, and it's, if it's an event center, if it's a hundred, limited to what, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty people. Uh, it probably would be in a range of a hundred, but it's a hundred vehicles in, a hundred vehicles out. So, but it is around two hundred really, total trips in and out. Uh, so I understand that concern too.
Anyone else?
Uh, just a comment, I think we've got two good neighbors, it sounds like they do get along well. Uh, there's a communication problem, I don't think they're talking before they come here. Uh, my biggest problem is construction starts in there. I know what happens when they get in there with big trucks, shingle trucks, concrete trucks and everything else, they tear the road up. You're gonna dispute on who's gotta fix that road, I know that's gonna be a problem. Uh, I love the event center, I wish it could happen, but with the circumstances we're dealing with, I can't be in favor of it.
Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll. Ask for a motion. This is Back Creek.
Well, if there is nothing else, and as much as I hate to say it, I have to recommend denial of a conditional use permit. Zero five dash eighteen, um, just because of the reasons we talked about.
And again, when we're voting yes, we're voting for a denial, so make sure we understand that a yes means denial, no means you don't. So I will start with Mister Moon.
Moon, yes?
Dawson, yes.
Tripoli, yes.
Mont, yes.
Molding, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Fine, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Arson, yes.
Huggery, yes.
The chair votes yes. This motion is denied. It will go to the board, uh, on May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a request that the staff make sure they express to the board our concern on why, why we turned it down, uh, traffic and who was responsible for the road and property values, so that they understand our logic on why we voted recommending denial. I know you always do that, but just emphasize tho, those were really our only concerns.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is CPPA number zero one dash one eight for St. Paul and the Hill, that land use designation amendment request. This is a request to change the land use designation for one parcel of land that totals four point nine seven one acres. The property is identified with a property identification number fifty-four dash A dash one two eight and is located at one five two seven Cincinnati Road in the Red Bud and Matchdale District. The property is located within the Sewer and Water Swazza District in the urban development area of the UDA. The property is currently designated in the Cincinnati Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan for the two thousand and thirty-five comprehensive plan for institutional land use with environmental resources. The applicant is requesting to change the current institutional designation to urban center. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment from institutional to urban center. Now, for this property, as you stated, it's currently zoned RP residential performance with an institutional land use. Now, that land use is reflective of the current church on the property as well as the adjacent school, which is also, uh, planned industrial. The site is surrounded, as I stated, by institutional, residential, and the Greenwood Urban Center, and they are seeking to amend from institutional to urban center. On the screen to your left is the zoning map for the property. As you can see, the property is outlined in black. The yellow is the current RP residential performance zoning, and then that pink along Cincinnati is a B one, uh, commercial district. And this is a blow up of the current comprehensive plan designation. As you can see, there's that, um, pink and green hatching for institutional across Cincinnati, um, and along, uh, the strip to the east, you see that, um, little red circles, that's the urban center designation, and the yellow hatching is reflective of the existing residential. This is the proposed, um, request. As you can see, it will take that urban center, um, the circle designation and extend it to this property. And just for reference, this is a blow up of the current land use plan. You can see the larger hatched area is the limits of the Greenwood Urban Center, um, kind of that central, uh, proposed commercial, uh, mixed use area. And it does extend a little bit out Cincinnati, um, which is reflective of some of the current commercial uses. Now, again, the property is zoned RP. It's a residential zoning district. The current buy right density of the property, if, if developed with a townhouse or garden apartment, uh, use would be a ten unit per acre density. Now, expanding the urban center designation on the property would increase that buy right density from ten units an acre up to twenty units an acre if they developed with a multifamily use. So that density increase, as I stated, would be a buy right density increase. It would not require a rezoning, which would then address any impacts. The comprehensive plans and programs committee did discuss this at their April meeting. They recommended approval and sent it forward to the planning commission for discussion. So tonight we are seeking a recommendation from the planning commission to forward to the board of supervisors on this request. I would be glad to receive questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions for Ms. Perkins? This is an information discussion item. Thank you. See any questions for Mr. Wyatt? This is a discussion item.
I believe Mr. Wyatt has the, wants to give a brief presentation.
Mr. Wyatt, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenwood Engineering. We're representing St. Paul's in this, uh, comprehensive plan amendment application. Candace did a good job of covering, uh, the application, uh, the specifics of it, and Chris, of course, talked about what we discussed at the CPPA. The, uh, couple of things I just wanted to do tonight, uh, is introduce, uh, the group that's with me, uh, primarily over here on my right. Uh, we have representatives from St. Paul's and Virginia Diocese Housing who have been working with this vision, uh, for quite a while, and then their development partner, Representative Paul Brown with Wesley Development Housing Corporation. St. Paul's is a mission church, and they desire to advocate, uh, housing for elderly, lower income residents of the community. And in order to do the facility that has been envisioned and desired, that's the basis for the comp plan amendment. Uh, as Candace said, the property is currently zoned RP, which would allow for residential development. However, to be able to do a singular multifamily building, uh, the comprehensive plan, actually, the zoning ordinance points back to the comprehensive plan and says, even though it's zoned RP, the comp plan still has to show it as an urban center. I said, that's the basis of the request. Um, as you saw on the maps, uh, the properties adjacent to us, as well as directly across the road, are currently in the urban center designation. Um, so this would, uh, change, would allow St. Paul's to move forward with the project. Uh, what's envisioned is a seventy unit facility, fifty-nine, uh, units would be one bedroom, eleven would be two bedrooms. Uh, once again, it would be elderly income qualified housing, and the facility itself would have community rooms, uh, with various opportunities, uh, for internal, uh, activities such as fitness center, wellness room, uh, residential services meeting room, game room, lobby room, and a library and computer room. Uh, so it's intended and designed to keep the, the residential folks, uh, active on the property. And the way that the concept plan is, I'm sure you saw the elevations that were provided in the application. What it would do would be create a new, uh, St. Paul's church that would be then connected to the facility that would situate behind it an angle towards, uh, the in rep facility. Um, so I just wanted to give kind of a overview of what the, uh, the program is. I know this is just discussion tonight. Um, I would also mention that, uh, this, this particular project, supervisor Dunn did have this, uh, hosted at his February town hall meeting. Uh, St. Paul's also has had community meetings and done individual outreach to the adjoining properties, and so far, uh, everything that we've heard to date has been positive. Um, but I'll certainly answer any questions you might have. And once again, uh, the development partner, Mr. Brown with Wesley Housing is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Any questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion amongst ourselves? Here or none? I'll.
I just wanted to throw one last thing in from the comp plan committee perspective, just to point out that what Evans kind of touched on is kind of an innovative approach, you know, to, you know, both addressing, I think, what an existing, you know, church is looking for, but also, uh, an important community need. So I think from a comp plan committee perspective, that was something that was certainly recognized as a good first step toward the whole urban center concept.
Thank you, Mr. Moe. Do I have a recommendation or do you want to move this forward, what I'm hearing? Sounds good. We'll send it on, and I guess it'll go to, do I get a majority vote? Do I need to vote on this? Just information, then it goes to the board supervisor for the May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen meeting. We're down to the end of our agenda for tonight. Uh, Mr. Roddy, do we have a meeting for the sixteenth?
We will have no meeting on May sixteenth, uh, but we will have one in the beginning of June.
Thanks, sir. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Adjourn. Thank you.